This is a workshop session. It's a joint session between Swan County School Board and Swan County Board of County Commissions. We want to welcome the commissioners and their staff here. I hope you all will allow us to host this event. This is, again, I've stressed that this is a workshop in the district. We're going to proceed this evening as Mr. Dixon is going to introduce our expert here that's going to walk us through his presentation. He has PowerPoints and some slides. And then, once he is finished with his presentation, then the commissioners are our guests here tonight. I'm going to cut them full. The commissioners ask any questions that they may have relative to the presentation. And after they have exhausted their questions, then we, the school board members, will present their questions to our expert. And then, once we've gone through that process, anyone in the audience who wants to ask a question relative or ask questions relative to the redistricting process and the information that you presented here today, you will be afforded that opportunity. So at this time, I'm going to give to Commander Dixon our board attorney, and he will address our guest speaker tonight. And we'll proceed for it.
Thank you. It is a privilege of ours to introduce Kirk Spitzer, who is the president of Kirk Spitzer in the sessions. He has been consulting and doing work with governmental agencies for 40 years. He has handled several counties, large, small, nearby. We worked with him on a difficult case in Jefferson County. He's widely known as an expert in redistricting and really understands census data, numbers, and how the law and the numbers fit in. And he has prepared a presentation for everyone. We have several alternative maps to go through. It would be helpful to let him explain where we are today, why we're here, the process of redistricting, the requirements, and then the actual Swan County's data back in the 80s, and then Swan County's data today, actually today, but from the 2020 census, pretty close to today, and how this process will work. Once he's done, the both boards will have an opportunity to ask particular questions. And I'm sure he'll find his expertise was well worth bringing on board. We worked with another district without an expert. It was very difficult. This will save a lot of time and money, and you want to get it right to avoid making mistakes. And with that, I welcome Mr. Spitzer.
Mr. Spitzer, just one housekeeping thing before we get started. If anyone should need a restroom, you can go out the door. Our resource officer here down the hall to your right, or you can go out the door in the kitchen here to your left, in the next hallway, and you'll see the restroom down there. If you have a fresh pot of coffee, if anybody gets to the point where they have to take some caffeine or whatever, we have some coffee there in the kitchen area, which is behind our resource officer in the back of the room. So thank you for allowing me to do that from the housekeeping.
This is largely a numbers exercise, so you better keep that coffee. But one thing, it'd be better if some of the lights could be shut off, not getting out all of them, but just that's better. That's good.
Well, thanks. So I'm Kirk Spitzer. My, a little bit, my, further embellish my background. I worked with the Florida Association of Counties for 10 years, including several years as their executive director. Then we formed our company in 89, and it has a local government focus. Everything that we do is a service to local governments or builds on our knowledge of local governments. And we've been, have legislative work and management consulting for counties and cities. And we've done about 30 or 35 redistricting projects over the past 20 years, ranging in size from the city of Quincy, which is about 7,500 people, to Pinellas County, which is almost a million people, and all kinds of places in between. So this evening, I'm going to talk a little bit about the redistricting process and criteria. And then we'll take questions from everybody. And I think the answers to some of those questions might be better responded to when I jump over to the redistricting software. I can show you how that works and how the data works together. So let me just jump into this. We're going to go through some of the criteria here and what redistricting is, what's not. This follows for this workshop, these are PowerPoints that you can have. Redistricting is a process by which we equalize the populations of the different electoral districts, whether they are legislative districts, congressional districts, cities, schools, or county governments. They need to be as nearly equal in a population as is possible. And the way that you make them equal is you adjust the boundaries and you add population to one district and maybe take population away from another district. This furthers the principles of the equal protection clause of the Constitution, the right to vote, the Voting Rights Act of 1965. And there's some general guidelines that we have in the redistricting process. And we'll go through those generally. Let me say that there's not a plan on earth that meets all of these criteria 100%. You do the best you can, and you try to balance, criteria balance against each other in this process. But the dominant criteria is population. The population of districts needs to be as nearly equal to each other as is possible or practicable. Ideally, we look at the need to adjust after each census. Census Day was April 1st of 2020. Everybody knows that there were some unusual problems with the census this last time, primarily due to the pandemic. The Bureau of the Census shut down the field process for a couple months during that time. So they were late getting this data out to state and local governments. But nonetheless, you should examine the need to adjust after each census, as soon as possible after the census is ready. But then you may adjust the boundaries within the confines of statutory criteria. The legislature changed the law a little bit this past session. Boundaries must be adjusted at least 270 days before the next general election. So that would put this, usually for county governments, it's been in any odd number of years. Now, it's 270 days before the next general election, so that puts sometime around in February this coming session. This is right out of, this is the local government article in Florida Constitution. So the counties shall divide the county as nearly equal in population as practicable. This is Chapter 124, which governs the commission of districts. And again, it says, must be as nearly equal proportion of population as practicable. There's a similar statute for school districts. But again, it says, it needs to be as nearly equal in population as is possible. It's pretty much impossible to have perfectly equal districts. But you try to get them as close as you can. Generally speaking, if you have a target where the largest or the smallest districts are not more than 3% over or under the average, that's a good goal to try and pursue in the process. Population is people. It's not registered voters. It's people. The census counts all the people that live in the United States. And that's what we base our data on in the redistricting process. The general rule of thumb is if there are two districts where there is a spread and deviations between the largest and the smallest of more than 10 percentage points, not 10%, 10 percentage points, that's kind of a red flag with the court. And there are some exceptions, but generally it's 10%. Speaking of, this was Jefferson County in 2013, and there, there was a spread of almost 13%, 13 percentage points, excuse me, and so they redistricted. There are some exceptions. There are some cases that where you see spreads of up to about 16 points. You have to have a good reason to do that. You need to document it in your record. But to help create a minority influence district or a minority-majority district, that could be a reason to under-populate one district. Or if you know that there's an area in the county that's growing much more rapidly than the rest of the county, you could under-populate that district. So 10 years from now, it's not so far out of balance as it might be otherwise. So that's population. You avoid plans that dilute minority voting strength. The two most common ways of diluting minority voting strength is called packing or cracking. You locate the minority population into one single district, or you divide the area where the minority population lives into multiple districts, cracking. Either one of those dilutes the voting strength of the minority population, and you should avoid plans that do that. Here's a little example of this. In Sunshine County, here, the minority population is about 22%, 23%. There are currently, you know, one minority-majority district and one strong minority-influence district. And these plans, here on the left, most of that population is packed into one district, or the plan on the right, that population is cracked or divided into four different districts. And so you avoid plans that do that. This is not a criterion law, but you use census blocks, all right? The census conducts this survey of the population every 10 years. It's readily available. It's presumed to be correct, census data. The smallest unit that this population is available is called a census block. And we'll see examples of that when I jump over to the software. Sometimes they're actually block-shaped, but a lot of times they're not. And they could be, they could follow a riverbank, or a parkland, or a creek bottom. But you follow, you use census blocks. And within each block, you have data on how many people live there, what their age is, what their race is, what their ethnicity is. And so with the right software, all of that, when you move one block from one district to another, is when you recalculate those numbers. In some of the old court cases here, you saw where the court looked at total population and then registered voters. You don't look at registered voters. I don't know if you ever did, but if you want to look at people who have a propensity to vote, you look at voting age population. And so the data will show you people that are 18 years old or older. If we were out six or eight years from now, and for some reason you wanted to redistrict that, but you're concerned that the data may no longer be as accurate as it was in 2023, you can supplement data with valid sources of other demographic information. Most of the times, people will use information from the University of Florida's Bureau of Economic and Business Research. You got to be careful about how you document that and explain why you're doing it, things like that. But we don't need to worry about that in this case today. Then, the other criteria are sort of criteria that are common sense criteria, and they make it easier for electors to understand where the district is and where one district stops and another district starts. You try to follow major boundaries, either roadways or a natural feature like a lake or a river. Those things like that are usually, not always, but 99% of the time, co-terminus with census block boundaries. So there's logic for doing that. It's just easier to understand for the voters where one district stops and another one starts. Districts have to be contiguous. You can't cross a water body to maintain continuity. You try to keep communities of interest together. You avoid districts with so-called bizarre shapes. This is the gerrymandering example. This is Dan Dapper, the governor of Mount Assuit, this many years ago, where he created this serpentine shape, and someone said, well, that looks like a salamander. And they said, no, it's a gerrymander. So that's how that term came about. Here's a more modern day example. This was a congressional district in North Carolina many years ago. This is what it looked like when we take out the rest of the state. And that went up to the Supreme Court, and they said, no, you can't do that. And so they had to redraw that particular district. So those are some of the criteria. You balance all of these together, but you really try to keep the disparity between the deviation from the average of the largest versus the smallest district of under 10, under a 10-point spread. You can't, it's impossible to draw a plan that meets all these criteria. So you just do the best that you can. And you, and there's a policy decision here that, you know, the elected officials will have to make and that the public will have input upon. Let me show you one other example here. This was the Leon County School Board, I don't know, maybe 15 or 20 years ago. The Leon County School District had five single-member districts at the time. The county commission had five single-member districts plus two commissioners who were elected at-large. The supervisory election said, I really would like to see those single-member districts be co-termus. And there's a lot of good reasons to do that. It's easier to, obviously, voters, it's key to manage elections. And so the school board was on the path of making these things co-termus, until they realized that if you look at the top plan, Plan Number Five, two of the districts had over half of the people would have been new to those districts. That they would have never had an opportunity to vote for or against one of the incumbents in those districts. On average, about 36%. And so the school board said, now, this is a great idea, but we're going to wait and see on that for another day. And they ended up adopting the plan down at the bottom, which had about a nine-point spread. But on average, each district had only 11% of new people in the district. So common sense is always a good idea. This is Quincy. Quincy had not redistricted itself in 40 or 45 years. There was a court order way back when that said you have to abandon the at-large redistricting system and the election system and go to single-member districts. And so when they did that, Quincy had a spread of 110 points. It was not even close. And Quincy has an African-American population of around 65% or 70%. And so the plan that was finally adopted had a spread of five or six points, but it created four minority-majority districts, plus it created almost a Hispanic influence district at the same time. So this is the plan that they adopted in Quincy. So that's, on the left is the plan prior to redistricting, and on the right is the plan after redistricting. And so Quincy had annexed South Port I-10 over the years, and, you know, some of the districts had to grow to get to an average of the right average size, and some, in fact, all of them almost did. Some maintained pretty much the same population, but this is the plan that was finally adopted by the city on the right. So we have prepared four draft options. They're just drafts. They're not binding. They're, you know, we haven't, we're going to get input from everybody tonight. Change your mission if you like. But here's the starting point. The spread between the largest and the smallest district is like, is over 67 points. So that's a lot. And like I said, usually the threshold is 10 points or less. There are some conditions when you can go over 10, maybe up to 16 or so points. But this is a lot. And so there are, you know, a few districts that need to lose population, and District Two needs to gain a lot of population. And so this is kind of like the starting point here. Let me explain these columns as we go through them here. The ideal population is the total population of the county divided by five. But we have not counted the population in the present. And speaking of, in Jefferson County, we were in Jefferson County 10 years ago. We developed a plan that followed case law and opinions of the Attorney General at the time, which was Count Henry Paul. And that plan was challenged, and Judge Walker, that just reported Tallahassee, said, no, you can't count the present population because that has the effect of diluting voting strength in the other districts. The present population in Jefferson County, about 15,000 people, the present population was around 2,000 people. So one person, instead of having, you know, a potential voting population of more or less 5,000 people, he had a voting population that he had to worry about, a voting age population of about three. And so that really diluted the voting strength of everybody else. And so the court said, you can't do that. And so this is the total population of the county, not including the present, which is around 1,700 people or so. The next column is the, I'm sorry, that was the ideal population. The next column is the actual population, expressed two different ways. The total population, then voting age, people who are 18 years old or older. And then you see the deviations, the difference between the actual population and the average, expressed in numbers and percent. And then you move into three areas of race, population and percent, white, black, and other. The black population, in the census form now, there are, I think, six categories of race that someone can choose. Plus, you can handwrite in a particular category. So it can be white, black, Native American, Pacific Islander. There's a number of different categories. More than that, people can choose multiple categories or combinations of a racial background, up to including all of them. You could check each one off. And so that's the large majority of the population of, of. However, the black or African-American population are people who said, I'm of two racial backgrounds, but one of which is black or African-American, right? So I might be African-American and a Native American. But someone who said, I'm of two racial backgrounds, one of which is black or African-American, that's, that what makes up that black column, the population and percent. Then there's other, which is everything else that are not white or black. And then there's Hispanic. Hispanic is not a race. Hispanic is an ethnicity. And so when you want to get up, add up the total population of each district or the county, you add other, black and white. You don't add Hispanic because you'd be double counting some people. Although, if there is a large enough number of Hispanic votes in Swan County, you might be compelled to look to see if you could create a Hispanic district. That doesn't seem to be the case in Swan County. So this is, this is the existing population. Then we have four different alternatives. And, you know, we've tried to make alternatives that are here that are most similar to the current district boundaries, but still are within that 10-point spread. Alternative two, I think, has the lowest spread between the largest and the smallest district. And then Alternative Three, I might say, has the, is the plan that has the highest percentage of African-American people within District Two. District Two is the district that, in the 80s, was ordered by the court to be the minority-majority district. Using the 2020 data, District Two has an African-American population of around 36%. It's no longer a minority-majority district. And what I've noticed that, when I saw this reference out, I was sort of wondering why. And the reason, as best as I can tell, is while the population of Swan County has grown since 1985, the African-American population has remained relatively unchanged. It's grown a little bit, but not, it has not kept pace with the same growth of other races within the county. So in 1985, the African-American population of Swan County was about 17.5%. That dropped to 14.5 in 1990, then down to around 12 in 2000, around 11 or 12 in 2010. And now it's right at 11% based on the 2020 census. And so it's difficult, if not impossible, to create a minority-majority district. So that, in my view, the attempt would be to try to keep that percentage in District Two as high as it can be. In Alternative Three, that's the highest of the alternative plans that we have, but maybe there's some other alternative that could be thought of. But you don't, you want to try to, you know, avoid plans that have these, you don't want to split census blocks, and you want to avoid plans that have, you know, strange shapes, like the gerrymandering example there. And so those are the alternative plans. I'm happy answering any questions, Mr. Chair. And, you know, I might, I'll leave this power point up, but after a while, I suspect questions will be better answered if I can jump over to the software and show you how some alternatives might work.
Yes, sir. And commissioners, if I may, I'll let you, you, I'm good. And your commissioners, they'll just feel free to go right down the line.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Doug. On the census data, is that accurate for the, how's that accurate? I mean, you explained that because you said that the diminution of the blacks in that area from 1985 to now, how's that, how's that being deleted, or is it planned?
Well, if you look, in my memo, appendage to the memo was an appendix from the judge's decision, and that's this little table here. And at that time, he showed both percentages of total population in this upper column, and then registered voters, which, you know, we don't use anymore in the lower column. But in the upper column... But in the upper column, at that time, the African-American population of District Two was like fifty-five percent. And this was based on nineteen eighty census data, yes, nineteen eighty census data. And the, the Bureau of Economic and Business Research at the University of Florida, BEVER, as it's called, they do all of the population and demographic work for all of state government, for all cities and counties and schools. They do all kinds of projections, both of people and students and, and things like that. They are the, the gold standard of, of demographic information within the state of Florida. And so, all I did was I took their data, and I also got some data from the supervisor elections from the, from the, that was used in the nineteen ninety, for nineteen ninety-two redistricting effort. But that was taken from BEVER also. And so, it, the University of Florida keeps track of these numbers. They adjust their numbers after each census. They, they'll do their own thing for, for nine years. When the census comes out, they say that's, that's the official number. They start the next decade with the census numbers, and they track. They're very good at making projections. And, so, all of this data is publicly available data, and it's, the, the African-American population in, in the county has, has simply not grown significantly as relates to the total population of the county. The total population of the county in nineteen eighty was around twenty-two, twenty-three, about twenty-two thousand people. Now it's doubled, almost doubled that. But the African-American population has simply not grown very much since that time. So, the, the percentage of the African-American population as relates to the overall population has gone down.
Yeah. Oh, you, Charlie hit on, I guess I wanna know on the field of the census question. What is the deviation there? I mean, we know the census count's not perfect. What percentage do they allow, taking that into consideration? I know you said they came up with a final number, but what is that deviation? Ten plus, ten minus?
Well, the, if we're speaking of the deviation in, in plans, the, the threshold is ten points. You can go higher than that. But, you know, I'm not aware, but the, the case law, my understanding is that I've seen cases where it's gone as high as sixteen points. But there's gotta be an unusual situation as to why you did that. If a plan has a deviation of less than ten points, that doesn't mean that the plan is valid. It could still be invalid for other reasons. But, what it means is, is the plan is valid in terms of population and equal protection issues, right? And so, it's presumed to be valid in that case. But it's, it's generally ten points. There could be exceptions for, to go over that. But you try to keep it as, as low as you can, but there may be other reasons to, to go higher.
And you mentioned that they don't take into consideration registered voters anymore.
Right.
Could you elaborate on that and why? Because I would think, you know, having redistricting would be to keep the voters in mind. And I notice you mentioned that variation of potential voters. Who comes up with that? Is that something that you guys come up with as a business, or is it something that the census or such comes up with?
The census does. The census, the question, there's one question is, "What's your age?" And it all gets boiled down to, for the, for this purpose of, "Are you eighteen years old or not?" If you're eighteen-year-old, eighteen-years-old or older, that's noted. And we'll, we'll see that in, in a second, in the, in the software there. But that's, that's a question from the Census Bureau. The, the way I said, the, the census data is the best that we have. It's presumed to be correct. Is it perfect? It's not perfect. And, and even as the Bureau of the Census has said, it's not perfect. But, it's the best that we have right now. And, and this, the situation that we went through this past census cycle, especially with the virus, really threw a monkey wrench in it, but it's the best that we have now.
I guess last, may I have some other questions coming up? I know the maps that I received didn't have any roads identified. Is there a particular reason for that? Would be a long, so you're just staring at these options?
Yeah. We'll have, you'll see roads. It's, when you get real small maps, if you added, if you really showed all the roads and then named the roads, if you just one black glob of ink, you wouldn't be able to see anything else there. But you'll, you'll, you'll see it on, on here.
So on your ideal population, you have eight thousand two hundred and ninety-nine, and you have a population of six thousand eight hundred and eighteen of them being white population, and your white population being only two hundred and eleven. And that's one you were saying in District Three? If you think we're getting better of the, of the chart that you have drawn out? Am I reading that correctly?
Oh, Plan Three? Oh, you're saying Plan Three or the existing map?
Yeah, Plan Three. Yeah, Plan Three.
Oh, Plan Three, okay.
You got your, oh, Plan Three.
Can you bring Plan Three back up? Oh, Plan Three. Uh, I can bring up the spreadsheet, sure. So, I'm sorry, what, the question was, this is Plan Three at the bottom.
Plan Three, and you said that Plan Three was, they would be the better of the alternative you do have, and it's showing the eight hundred and, eight thousand two hundred and ninety-nine ideal population.
Right.
And it's showing here to have six thousand eight hundred and eighteen population of whites and three hundred and eleven population of blacks. And so, you said that would be a better of the alternative?
Well, I, I mean, better is a, is a value judgment. I mean, I, I think that Plan Three is a plan that has the highest percentage of African-American people in District Two. And, and it does have a little bit of a higher deviation, but it's still under ten points. I think it's an acceptable, uh, plan. And I, I just, there's, it's impossible to get to a minority-majority district in District Two, but you can, you know, we, we'll try to get the, that percentage up as high as you can, but recognizing that the existing district has thirty-six percent, not, not fifty percent, thirty-six percent African-American votes.
Was the Bureau, I guess, calibrating your, your, your district or your geographical areas? Are you, are you researching to see how many, the number of blacks in a particular area to be able to draw your boundaries? How, how that?
Well, the first starting point is to, to get a roughly equal number. But, but after that, you try to look at the existing districts, you don't wanna make them too different, you know, the proposed district. But, yes, we did look, especially for Plan Three, at, at where the African-American population was near to the existing District Two. And, and I can show you that on the software when we get there.
That's right, I'm good.
If, if, if anybody on the county commission before we switch to the school board has any questions about what would happen if you changed a map now at the time? He can show us that in the software.
I wouldn't want to show him the software.
Like, if you had a question about, like, if we moved this road here, he can.
Well, I would not only want to just see it here, I would, I would probably, yeah, I don't know how, if I can do that with technology.
Will your plans have more than what we're talking?
The, the, let me, just, in the interest of disclosure here, if you wanna, if we begin into the software, you wanna say, "Well, how many people live in this little area here?" I can do that right now. But, to, you know, make that change, it's like pushing in the side of a balloon. Because if you add a hundred people from one district to another, well, then, you've gotta maybe add a hundred back into the other district. So, all of that takes time to do. And, but I'm happy to tape all those kind of notes, and we can go back to other maps if, if you all wanna do something like that, just show you how it, how it works. But, to do it on the fly here, I, it, it, it's time-consuming, and I, I don't like, you know, doing stuff like that on the fly without having the time to prove it out, prove it myself.
Okay, I, I see some, some hands, folks in the audience wanting to ask questions, and we're gonna have time for you all once the commissioners are finished with their questions, the board members finished with theirs, and then we'll take questions from your audience, just wanna emphasize that here's some of y'all, and then, a little bit like, commissioners, any other questions so far?
No, no more questions.
Board members? Frank and Mike?
Uh, the only, the only question, I understand, is.
Yeah, he gets confused up here, too.
Well, he didn't cross lines.
I call, I, the references are broken, so I don't know.
Look it up a little.
See, maps here, is, all, all the maps that you have, that you have drawn here, this is just for suggestion, basically, it's what all these maps are, not one prevailed over another map, is it?
No. There, I would say that they're all, they're all valid maps. I, I would say that, you know, the court back in eighty-five, I think, ordered you to go to a minority-majority district, so we should be mindful of that. Right? Now, if, if the data is there, the data doesn't seem to be there to maintain a minority-majority district, so I think you'd be, it'd be wise to, you know, try to maintain District Two as a, as much of a minority influence district as, as is possible. But they're, they're, they're just ideas, they're just examples, they're, they're just, they're just done on using common registered and criteria.
And when you say that, you want, you're talking about the balance between a minority and a majority, is it close together?
Well, um, for, for three of them, it's, it's the, the deviation of the spread between the largest and the smallest, and, and trying to keep the existing district boundaries where we can, following major roadways, things like that. For Alternative Three, we, we, you know, try to do that, but we also try to increase the minority population of District Two as much as we can.
I'll commit to one map as the closest population, or percentage, as we can talk about.
Uh, actually, Alternative Two is the closest.
Alternative Two?
Yeah.
Any other questions, Mark?
No, that's, I was just trying to see if I feel or which map you were looking at, or what, or whether it was later down, which one was flipped here, but the population was considered to be closest to population, or percentage. So, it's not, not really a population, just a, a, a.
Mr. Chairman, in your presentation, or you mentioned, one, one county spoke about future growth and how that looked out, I think ten years was your example. And I think this is a question for you, but maybe for some of the gurus in the row and some of the county commissioners may know. So, and we have a, a, Mr. Osborne here, surveyor. So, we're, as, as far as growth in the county, where do, where do things, where do, where do we, where do we stay in Swanee County? Do you look like we're, there's one area that's kinda bulging out, we're gonna have that, like, pushing the balloon now, doing? So, does anybody here have an idea of where we're at with that five years down the road, ten years down the road? When we do this now, it's all great, and we, you know, come together and, but ten years down the road, if we have, you know, one area that kinda is, is kinda taking off, is, is there a place that looks that way now? Could you?
No.
Get up in here, buddy, 'cause we got a pretty good question for you. So, talking about future growth in the county, you know, so, if we do this now, you know, what's gonna happen five years from now, ten years from now? Is there one part of the county that looks like it's really taking off, really moving? Is there a lot of vacant land in one area of the county?
Um, I would say, just, you know, I may be wrong on this, but I think the south end's probably growing faster than anything else, save McAlpin South, Lurdiel, McAlpin.
Both sides are one twenty-nine? Either of them really matter?
It don't really matter, you got.
Say two fifty-two south, probably.
Yeah, I'd probably say that. You got a lot of subdivided area down there. A lot of subdivisions that were never developed, and they are starting to be utilized now. So, versus the northern part of the county, a lot of farmland, hasn't been subdivided. But you get down there, there's pretty big subdivisions. And, and, and it's starting to, you're starting, well, I mean, it's evident, like, you look at the current map you got in your hand right now, I think District Five's got the most people in it, and it's still into, to that trend right now.
Okay, thank you. Uh, no, no.
Well, basically, I, I have great concerns, offset, and so, how that's, we look as a relation African-American vote, I was concerned about the boundaries, the lines, all of that, those opportunities, right? The initial work shot, so we're gonna address that, but we did, we all did that. So, you, you're taking in your interpretation that the white vote is, is changing, they don't, the right now, there's a, 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 something like that. So, if you put people in those areas, so, that's gonna affect the voting trend, you know, that, that doesn't, you, 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 certainly it's gonna affect the voting trend. You put people in, you got one population that's not growing, it's gonna affect the voting trend. And if, if there are anything in place where you're, you're disappointed that you're gonna reassess, you know, what you have, if, if you go on and decide to do it, is there anything in your, in your, in your travels that you got, when it's like, reassess, to see what the outcome and the effects of what any county or any area voted on, and how it affects the one race, or the Hispanic, or white, or whatever.
We have not been asked to do that. We have not done that in the past. Certainly, in terms of reassessing something, we could reassess any of these maps up there based on your input and the public input tonight, and we can, you know, redraw any of the districts, you know, that would, you know, try to make, for example, the African-American population of District Two a little bit higher. I don't know what that would do in terms of shapes, but certainly can do that. The, the basic dilemma is that, as I recall, District Two has almost three thousand people under what the target is, and so that's a lot. And, so, that's gonna, necess, necess, necessitate a change, and, and in a similar but opposite way, District Five needs to lose, you know, twenty-six hundred people, so. But I, I, we've never been asked to see what the, you know, five years from now, how the, the outcome of the districting plan affected voting patterns or something like that.
Yeah, I think that's important, because, you know, if you don't have some type of representation of the white, or, 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 I think that's a problem. So, we have, we have people, we have their taxes, they, they contribute in the community, so we should have representation on boards, we should have a, we should have a good platform for the community this time. So, if we start playing around too much, it's, it's, you know. So, if we start playing around too much, like, you know, you isolate, you know, board members or councilmen from participating on the board, to do that, that's a devastating thing. So, I don't want to see that.
Mr. Crawford, next time you speak, you just speak in some way. Yes, sir. Okay.
That, that was my, my, my girl should arrive, I have a great reputation on the board, so, see the council, the county commissioner, the school. So, I've been around, I've said too much, how would it affect on the, when voting that, we have all, add people in the community to bring to Districts, and then we're pretty much just like, uh, the council.
Stand for, we're going to be pressed at that. Commissioner, will this, this hand out, if you started with, you made a statement on this thing here, where it says, may adjust boundaries before two hundred and seventy days of the next general election, and then you said something about the legislature, or, or the legislature, I assume you said must, the word must, I used the word must, so I, I get clarification.
A pick. They, they adopted that law this past session, and, uh, I get, I think what the law says is that you may not adjust district boundaries less than two hundred and seventy days before the general election. And so, you, you may adjust them, you know, two hundred and seventy-one days, two hundred and eighty, as far as the Florida legislature is concerned, but you can't adjust them less than two hundred and sixty-nine days or earlier before the next general election. Some cities have their own election cycles, I think, the live vote, and, um, I think their election's in May, so it's kind of a floating target. Um, not sure why the legislature, legislature did this this year, but...
Another question is, being, no matter which one of these alternatives, who's that we, that we look at, is in here tonight. Constitution says, once the census taken, you look at the population of the districts, and then things have to be adjusted so that they're not pathogen, our, our, our deep kilter. So, I mean, that's why we're here, that's why we're discussing this. Constitution says, we have to look at, consider, bring things within the suggested guidelines, correct?
Right.
So, any other questions? At this time, we will open, open it up to, to the floor and ask that you, uh, we, uh, I go, when I see hands, you deal, Tommy, I see your hand, and then we'll go, come here, anyone else have questions? Yes, sir.
I think that, please, Mr. Crawford, I think that we all understand how Swan County got to the point of having districts. And we know there was a challenge, sure, there's some time ago with countywide voting, it was approved by a voter's referendum in this county, and then the night when the board of county commission were to do a resolution to go back to countywide voting, and everybody lost the faith, though that was flawed. Because there were two U.S. Marshals sitting in audience, and I was hoping they could handcuff someone, which they didn't have to. But now, in saying that, we know how this can be interpreted. Now, District Two here, you're talking about expanding or diminishing, bringing it in?
Well, just, the District Two boundaries need to expand, because District Two needs to gain about three, twenty-nine hundred people.
But they won't be black people.
Well, we, we are trying to, uh, do the best we can in, in doing that.
Do, he's smashing about the Constitution. Does the Constitution requires any changes to District Two?
Well, the...
There's a, we're speaking of the fact that this court order, that, that defined the boundaries of geographical area of District Two, and that court order, if you change it, you're going to be in violation of court order, and I personally will do whatever I can to file a suit.
I, I don't think the court order said that.
Whoever, it doesn't matter. Now, my thing is, if you can not expand District Two to twenty-six four hundred people, those are going to be Hispanics, if you do, and it's his, his Spanish and whites. And I think we know generally how Hispanics vote, and how whites vote, how blacks vote. It would not be to support a, uh, I would say not, I would not say completely, be the last chance of, of a white person being elected. When you expanding District Two?
The, District Two, the, the, the population ha, it has to expand, and, and we'll do the best we can.
Will that be in violation of court order?
Um, the court order, I, I think, as the way I, I'm not aware, the way I read the court order, the, the...
It says henceforth, that's the chairman asks, and it's said immediately, or immediately comes, language henceforth forever, until somehow you quote, or some quote.
I, 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 so, the Supreme Court has declared one person, one vote to be preeminent and paramount in considering these districts. The decision of a federal district court would yield by necessity to the Supreme Court's.
So, you're saying that court order is no longer valid?
That is not what I'm saying, I'm saying that, I, I'm saying that in redistricting, the county and the school board must take into consideration the Supreme Court mandates over any district, is just like how a circuit court...
So, what is the Supreme Court saying?
The Supreme Court said...
I don't have the appropriate action, I don't, so, that's, that's...
The Supreme Court has said one person, one vote, and that anything outside those ten points of deviation are generally speaking, presumptively inbound. Right now, the districts are outside those ten points of deviation, which is why they must be moved, the boundaries must be adjusted, bring them in, it's not...
So, now, when you add twenty-six four voters to District Two who are not going to be black, that's not diluting the vote strength of the black?
Based on...
Yes.
It's a little bit.
All, all districts are going to be changed.
I'm not concerned about the others, sir, I'm only concerned about District Two.
Or about District Five, where I'm overpopulated, twenty-three thousand.
You, you worked on that.
Well, that's one of them.
I'm working on District Two.
But I, I got the same issue you got.
Well, that's twenty-fourth eleven.
Well, that's what I thought was going to do.
But changing, adding twenty-six hundred people, I know who they're going to be. And you, and you, and I know I never will run again, so I'm not even concerned about myself, I did sixteen years, that's enough, but I have children, I have friends, I have friends, I have... And I, District Two will cease to be a minority district if you do that.
So, now, what's, I mean, I, I understand what you're saying there, but what's, what's, what's your fix for?
Even though, and how it be changed?
We can't do that.
You've been doing everything, yes.
When was the last time this was done?
To the best of my knowledge, this was done in ninety-two. I don't know if it's been done since then, I don't know.
I do not believe it's mandatory change, District Two. I'm sorry, I hear what you're saying, and I, I'm sure you've been knowledgeable, you're an attorney, of course, knowledgeable in what you're saying, but sometimes interpretation about attorney, it is out, and my good friend, that can tell you, it is history, so... It's necessary, I understand that.
Chairman, if, if Bill would have done that, so, I'll give you a couple of questions. He's, he's our associate, the, the Kirk, and Jeff, and he has done redistricting, um, and understands the, the, why we're here, the Supreme Court cases. He's not interpreting the cases, he's telling them what the case said, he's not spinning them, it's, it's a whole...
But my question is, where you going to get twenty-six hundred more black people to go in District Two? They don't live yet, they're not, after, anyway you expand, it's going to be white, on this end.
Let me just say, again, that this is a county-wide redistricting, so it affects all five districts.
Yes.
And for, for someone, and I, I, I respect you, respect what, what you're saying, but I don't think anyone has a crystal ball to say that there's going to be strictly one population, twenty-nine hundred people coming into a district. I think it takes into account as physi, as much as physically possible to accommodate.
The only way you're going to get twenty-six hundred people...
But it affects, but it affects all five districts. Now, if you have another question, because the other people have, have, have questions, so I've, I've given you a lot of leeway, so, so, so... So, the quantification part, if you, if you're finished, if you have a question.
May I ask, when you, you were questioning, is this going to be finalized tonight?
No, it's a workshop.
You're going to have other workshops?
It's a workshop.
I'll come and, I'm, I'm finishing that, I think I got my...
Yes, Attorney.
Uh, Mr. Spitzer, Attorney, would you all go through and, and make it on to the public here, why are we redistricting, what are the purposes, why, why doing this at this time?
Okay, I can answer. Uh, the easy answer, and this is touched on, as, as to why it was voted on to do this time or this other time, I can't answer. But I do know, Mr. Spitzer pointed this out, it was at the beginning of this presentation, but, but Article Eight, Section One of the Florida Constitution, county subsection E, uh, commissioners, and it says, after each decennial census, the board of county commissioners shall divide the county into districts of contiguous territories nearly equal in population as practicable. So, every ten years, the commission in each county has an affirmative obligation under the Constitution to do it. Now, the fact that it hasn't been done, I can't speak to that, but as to...
Take the words.
You know, it doesn't, there is a constitutional obligation set out under that to, to do it, so, that's, that's the reason for it, at least, as found in the statute.
And for the school board, Section one zero zero one dot three six of Florida statutes also requires, school board districts shall, as nearly, as nearly as practicable, be equal in population. So, while the school boards are not under the census obligation that the county is, the board is nonetheless still required to maintain districts that are as nearly as practical, uh, be equal in population, so...
Would that, though, in the past, if that were, has followed our, our...
Yes, and from a common sense standpoint, it's impossible to remain that way.
So, in saying this, now, if this is not done, what ramifications is it not done?
Well, um, you know, you never know what's going to happen, but you're at risk, I think, of someone bringing a lawsuit against you for, for not doing this. And, and the worst case would be that it goes into a federal court and a, a judge redraws your district.
Probably right now, Duval County is in that situation, and, uh, the judge will be throwing these maps, you, you won't be picking them, and then they may all have to go to election at one time, uh, during the general election. And the court takes over, and then you have the pleasure of paying tons of attorney fees to the plaintiffs, uh, in your own attorney's. So, it's, it's a very, very expensive process, uh, when, when a, a group or a citizen sues for complaints. And you do it in federal court for a while, and then a federal judge could take over our maps, because these are our, all of our maps.
You, you guys, I, I thought you were saying they do immediately, I didn't know if there was a time period to communicate the county to correct it, or...
Right.
Versus it going straight to the judge.
Right, the time, the time is now, but we, we learned of the numbers, and we learned the numbers were out of, out of kilter, that's a good way of saying it. Um, and so, we want to bring all the districts in bounds, not really one district, but, or, what I think you did with alternative three was put a large number of African-Americans in District Two, as many as you could find, and keep, keep the districts not looking like the jury.
Then one thing I do want to emphasize, too, just from litigation standpoint, is in terms of the possibility of being sued, because one thing I think you correctly pointed out is nobody's done it yet, so there's a chance that it's going to happen in the future. Just to point out, it takes, for a valid federal lawsuit, which could end up having a judge redraw our lines, enforce it on us, and we pay our attorney fees and their attorney fees, only one person has to decide to sue.
And as, as eleven elected officials are truly directed to the county, I mean, it's, we've spoken off the support of the state constitution, so I think it's a couple of us to, to follow through with that, whether nobody sues or not, it's, it's, there's some diligence in that, but, I mean, it's our job.
Tom, Tom, you have a question?
My question, just to, uh, simple understanding, give me a definition, your definition of minority, because my definition of minority might be totally different. You say African-American at one point in time, then you say minority, give me your definition of...
Well, I think for the purpose of this, uh, tonight, uh, the, the minority is, the minority influence district is African, the African-American district. And, um, there are, I, I mentioned, I believe, that, uh, if, if populate, if the demographics are there, that, that folks of Hispanic ethnicity enjoy some of the protections under the Voting Rights Act as well, but I don't see that those numbers exist in Swan County.
But, and, and back on what Mr. US said, now, you're saying that the, the African-American population have not grown in this county, or in District Two in this county, say, it's District Two, what, and once again, so how are you going to fulfill that gap, twenty-six hundred people, three thousand people? How are you, uh, fulfill that gap of bringing it in, or as, that's going to get representation?
Well, the, we're going to do the best we can, is, is the answer, um, and, and it, you know, it, it may not be twenty-six hundred African-Americans.
Forget the number, you're talking about trying to make a population grow, all right, mainly the African-American population grow, and they're not growing in this county, they're not even growing in this city, among the city councils. So, how are you going to make that grow without adding another population, or, or other, uh, racial groups to that population?
Well, we could look at that, but I, I think your, the, the general direction is, is African-American. I mean, if the court order was African-American in eighty-five, that's what, that was the, the order of the court. If, if there's something, if you want to start mixing different, uh, ethnicities or something like that, I don't know if I would...
I mean, but you're bringing that to the forefront, and you said that the population have not grown, but how are you going to get to where we need to get to? If you, I mean, I don't think I would, I hope not have a baby, so now, how are you going to make this...
I don't think I understand what you're asking, Mr. Crawford.
How, well, how are you going to make the population grow? If we understand...
What population, what population, I mean, what population are you talking about?
Hold on, Mr. Frank, we're talking white, we're talking about the, the, the black population, that's what we're talking about.
Well, I understand that, to make the districts equal, you got to move population.
We understand still on our, how are we going to make that particular, if we can get the representation, and then concern Mr. Crawford as well, how are you going to expand on that population, the vote, without bringing in others? That's why I asked him a question about, what is, what is his definition of, of, of minority versus African-American?
Well, I think, I think, from my standpoint, he didn't get it, you asked him, he answered that question, yes.
Yeah, he was going off the census definitions of how they handle votes, based on race, that's how the census is. And, and so, the, the numbers are the numbers, and he, he can't, he can't grow, grow...
I don't understand, that's going to be...
Right.
We have a question, we have a question, we're back there on the five, five, we're five, Fleming, and then, uh, put, okay.
Yes, I'm Mary Holland, who would make, I've seen the mouse drone from here to there to steal people, but who makes the final decision as to, then, what you all are trying to do?
It's, it's the governing body of the county and the governing body of the school district.
So, the people in Memphis, the people vote, the ones that were affected by the change, so it's not the same here, where the people that this affects get to vote to see if they want to remain in a certain way.
It's not, Columbia County, as an example, has an advisory committee... It's not, uh, Columbia County, as an example, has an advisory committee of, of folks that makes a recommendation, but at the end of the day, it's the county commission that adopts the recommendation. It's not, it does, to me, it doesn't sound like it's the same as what it was in Memphis.
All right, Fleming, your question?
Uh, yeah, my question is, um, some of it got answered tonight, uh, already, but, uh, due to the fact that, uh, uh, you still said that five, ten years from today, and, and, um, you're gonna run into a, a different issue, but, on the other hand, the effect is on District two, where I was just twelve years, just twelve years, okay? Now, if five is the largest district in the county, um, your point is, what you're saying, I think we're getting off track, your point is that you're trying to, trying to get it, you know, everything is equal, all the districts have equal balance. But, the problem is, two also, in District two, you have a lot of the minorities moving out in different areas. You're, you're not, actually losing it, it's just the fact that they're moving into different areas. Myself probably be moving out in a matter of months, uh, into a different district, District, District three. So, if you did, did a, a overall, uh, count, we'll find that those numbers may be greater. I know in, in twenty-twenty, we let, uh, census, Swan County, if, you know, during the COVID time, we, our numbers were higher than any other counties around us. So, now, if those numbers have dropped that quick, something is wrong somewhere. Uh, I don't wanna be argumentative about it, I know that, uh, uh, the, the changes that, that, that will be made, I know there's gonna be no change in that, there's a workshop. I, myself, like, Mr. U D L, I, I plan on getting every one until the final decision. But I, I hope that, that, don't, you don't make a fuss out of it, an issue out of it. And what is the, the driving force, I know they're trying to make it even, but the driving force behind it, what is it, what is that, what's bringing that on?
Well, it's, it's a requirement of, of the state constitution and state law, but it's also, I mean, overarching is, is the requirements of federal case law, right? And, and the districts need to be more or less equal in population, and so that's, that's what, what the, the driving force is.
Well, but that's gonna knock everything out of whack, so then, that's, I think that's the, the confusion there, you know?
They're, they're out of whack now, uh, we're trying to get less out of whack. Uh, and, and to your point, I don't know that we're, the, if African American population has actually moved out of District two to other spots in the county, uh, the, the overall African American population in the county has, has grown a little bit, but not, not much, uh, but the total population has, you know, almost doubled since eighty-five or so, so in, in proportion, the, the total African American population as compared to the total population of the county is, is a much smaller percent. Like, I don't know what to do about that, that's just, that's how things are right now. Now, I, you know, and that's, you know, what we're, we're looking at today, there, there's other ways to, to, to still have an African American seat, but that's not a redistricting seat, that's changing the number of districts or something like that, if you wanted to, to do that at some point in the future, that's, that's a whole other discussion.
All right, Mike, you have a question?
Yes, so, I heard mention about three would be the one. Now, if you want to still keep District two a minority majority, would that be like cutting a swath, like, you know, dissecting out of different districts to still keep District two a, um, minority majority? Um, that's just, I'm asking that, and then just a side note, if we're concerned about dwindling population of African Americans, then I think we need to ask ourselves, what are we doing to increase the population and work on that as well? But I, I just wanna know, because I live in District one, so now, are we talking about, we take, cut, and, and, I mean, I'm just using my hands, so I speak with my hands. But when we start here, say, all right, say District one, go here, cut down this road, say, Hough Road, and catch some of us that live on Hough Road, then go somewhere else just to put us in the District two, is that what alternative three would be? And I'm just asking.
Two A.
Okay, two A, so, all right, two A, so is that what that would be? And again, I'm gonna go back to, you need to ask yourself, ask ourselves, why is the African American population dwindling in District two, and as a whole in Swan County? And what are we doing to fix it? All right, I'm done with that.
Oh, hello.
It might be good to jump over to the software and answer some of these questions.
And while you're doing that, because it's, you know, we talk a lot about alternative three, and, and looking at the numbers, it looks to be the closest to the way it currently is now out of all, you know, it is. Percentage points fluctuate very, the boundaries may move, but the percentage points of.
And that's what you're gonna show, is the software, is how the boundaries move?
Right, so, this, this is the, uh, the current districts, uh, and, and the current boundaries, and we, when we, uh, so this is alternative one, and you can see the statistics in front of you, but the, the black lines here are the new boundaries for District one, District three, and District two, and, so this is District two here, and so it, it kept the boundary on the eastern side, but it grew, uh, over on the west, and, and a little bit here in this area here, out of District four. Um, and so here, by the way, let me show you this, um, oh, this is for the whole, let me, uh, these are census blocks. So, this is a block here, and you can see it's not block shape, but there's a total population of seventy-nine people in this particular, uh, block. Seventy, uh, three are, uh, black, I'm sorry, are white, three are black, three are other. And then there's two who said were Hispanic, but that's mixed in somewhere in this seventy-nine people, right? And so there are fifty-six people who are over the age of eighteen or voting age, uh, in this particular block, and so all those blocks are, are like, would produce information like that. So, um, in terms of, so this is Plan one, uh, and we can get in, you know, closer here, uh, this is Plan two, which, uh, loses some of this area of the, of the eastern side of District two, grows south and a little bit to the, to the door. And here is two A. Sorry, maybe I. This is two A.
All right, so the white line goes on up to top.
Right, the, the, the existing maps, the, the symbology is that the colors all stay the same, those, those are the existing boundaries, but the new boundary is, is these dark lines. And so this is District two, and here is, uh, Plan three. So, um.
So, I'm asking, in this slide that you have up here now, District two, this white line that goes all the way to the top of the screen, has to be part of District two, is that correct?
Well, this is District two here, this line is, separates District one and District four, but, but this area here is District two.
So, some of these lines could potentially move a sitting candidate out of the, this district?
Well, um.
Or move one into the.
None of these, a plan certainly could, none of these plans do. And, uh, I would say that, uh, part of this law that changed the, the date of the elections, um, uh, the, the two-hundred-and-seventy days, uh, they, they took a, remember this amendment that we adopted to the Florida Constitution several years ago, uh, among other things, it, it said you, the legislature can't draw a plan that favors or disfavors an incumbent or a candidate. This law, uh, parroted that, that phrase, and so that's, you as a governing body cannot intentionally adopt a plan that favors or dis favors a candidate or an incumbent.
And you say the board, the board, white line, um, I'm looking at District two, it's seeming like District two is gonna lose, uh, to District four, a few of them.
Well, District, this, District two, this part of the existing District two goes into four. And this part of four goes into District two, this part of three goes into two, and this part of one goes into two.
So, do we know what nationality the, the, that's going into District, do you have, you, you have any information?
Uh, well, I know that, um, in terms of a change, I can't give you that answer right now, but I could probably figure that out.
Yeah, I need, I need to, you need to know that.
Louder, louder.
I need to know that.
I think it's about six hundred more African Americans than the existing numbers.
That's going into four?
That's going into two, two.
In this three?
There's currently nineteen-hundred forty-seven and two, and this is going, Proposition three is twenty-five sixty-five.
So, my question is, how are we gonna lose and launch a District four, that's my question?
Out of this blue part as well.
The blue, the blue, that's how much is four, that's the question.
And the probably is picking up six hundred, so you're not moving.
I don't, I'm not concerned about what I'm picking up, we lose at eight hundred, that's all.
Can you say answer?
That's all, if you lose eight hundred, you're going to four, that's all I'm thinking. Do you want to?
It's a mess now.
You should try to run this right now, boy.
It's like four hundred.
But he can't.
All right, let's, let's keep that. Let's keep, keep the comments down here.
It's a strong.
Listen to this, listen to this, please, finally, finally ask a question, say it.
Okay, so, uh, we've gotta add twenty-nine hundred people to, or twenty-six hundred people to District two to get to the balance, and so what we're gonna do, what we tried to do is, is maintaining a, a reasonably shaped district, reached out and grabbed, uh, those census blocks that had a higher African American population than other blocks. And so we were able to keep the population, the percent, at thirty-two percent, as opposed to what it is right now, which is thirty-six percent, um, it's not, minority majority is thirty-six percent now, so this is, now, could, could we do better? Maybe, uh, and, and we can try, uh, let me, uh, show this. This is the, uh, African American, uh, population here, but you need to be careful when you look at this, uh, because it's, it's, it's raw numbers, it's not a percent of each block. And so, and let me give you an example here. In this particular block, there's nine-hundred-and-eighteen people, but only a hundred-and-sixteen of them are, are black. And so while this, this looks like it might be a lot of folks, the, the percentage, I mean, I haven't worked this out, but I'm, I'm guessing that, you know, this is not, this is less than thirty-two percent African American folks, and so if you were to reach over here and grab this block and put it in, I don't know if that would help, because you'd have to lose that number of people in some other spot, you know? Uh, but you could, you know, there's other, there's, you know, along this borderline here, there's, there's areas here that could be examined, but see, we've grabbed these areas here, um, and, uh, you know, trying to make this, uh, the, the higher African American population that we, as we can, see, here's a block with three-hundred-and-fourteen people, um, forty-four are, are black or African American. Here's a block with a hundred-and-thirty, um, and forty-three are, are black or African American, so that's a little bit closer to what you wanna do, or what, what a plan, how you might wanna modify this plan, what we, so, this is, there's, there's not a lot of other options, right? And this, I would, this is where the prison is, and, so it, here, we, we have, we have taken out, there's a coding system in the census data that says that this person is, just like any, white, black, eighteen, whatever, but it also said this person is incarcerated, so we have, uh, taken those folks out, that's seventy-nine or thirteen people here, and the, so the remaining, uh, population is two-ninety-five in this block. The block is not just the prison, there's other people that live in the block, there might be some people who, who live on the prison ground and work there, and so they're, they're, they're not incarcerated, so we've counted them, but there's, these are, out of the options here. Now, or, or, we could, uh, shed blocks that have, um, that are currently in this, this two, that has a, a higher, uh, white population, and, and shed that and, and move that out, and so then perhaps the spread would no longer be seven, whatever it is, points, but it might be nine, or maybe, maybe, this is an example of a valid reason to go over ten by a little bit, but, but there's not a lot of options. There, there are some, and we're happy to, to work, however you tell us to, to work on this, but there's not a lot of, given the, the, the data and the demographics, there's not a lot of.
So, how does the federal government refine a census block? What is, because I see they're just, they're the size and the shapes, and there's no.
Yeah, um, if you find out, uh, there's, there's no, I don't know, I, I, I think there, mostly it's some historical guideline, but, and then they change block shapes from time to time, and there's no reason why, there, there doesn't seem to be any logic as to why they do that, but there, in almost every exercise that we've been through, there's been at least a couple of blocks that have been changed for some reason, doesn't really matter as long as they're not along a boundary line, right? So, uh.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Um, I hear, we talked a lot about map number three, it, Mr. Spitzer, is there any, do you have any concern, um, in reference to map number three, that we're less than, we're less than three points away from that, that ten number? I mean, at the cost to the county and the school board, I mean, we're at thirty-five-thousand institute for the, for the study, by the time supervisor elections and all those costs are added up, I mean, we're gonna hit seventy-five, eighty grand during this process, potentially more, a hundred grand. Do you have any concern with that number? I mean, obviously Swan County is growing, um, in all areas, specifically in five. One with a map like Three that's very close to ten, I mean, is that going to be fiscally responsible for us to, and have to do this again in ten years because we're at fourteen or eighteen or?
Well, you, you're obligated to examine it every ten years. I know that some places just don't, but, but you're, you should examine the need to examine it. I think I would be more concerned, um, about not doing something like Three than I would be the seven points getting up to the ten. Because I, I think that you could go, I think, I think this is a valid reason to, to go over ten, if you wanted to.
Mr. Dixon, can I?
His judgment on the outcome is really our judgment. We have to live with that. He can't really weigh in. He can only tell you what the numbers say and where we want to put them, but he can't evaluate the legality of what we're, we're doing. But it's not fair to him. But I, I, I a hundred percent appreciate the cost of all this. Because if we, if we asked him to do four hundred maps, we would have a significant burden. So, we're trying to balance the best we can, but the numbers given to us, and they're just our numbers, we're not, we can't. The numbers from federal government, no one chose them. No one chose where the vote was. He's just telling you where the numbers are. And, and now we have to live with what we have and do the best we can within one person, one vote.
I do think, I think to answer your question directly, though, Commissioner Landt, is, if we, and, and, and not, if when we looked at re-districting in 2030, because we're going to have to, right, like the Constitution says, if we're within that ten percentage points, then we don't have to do anything. If we're outside of that, then there's an obligation to fix it. I think that.
Yeah, yeah, and my, my, and, and maybe that, for some folks, that hundred thousand dollars isn't significant, but at the pace of our Swan County's growth over the past ten years, when you compare the, the previous census to, to the 2020 census, I don't know what that number is, but it's eight, ten percent. I mean, if the county grows at all, in any, the district doesn't matter, but, I mean, it does in a way, but you're going to, you're going to, you're going to be hitting that ten points at, at our current rate of growth, more than likely, with map Three. But now, I might say there again, maybe that hundred thousand dollar, that's insignificant today. I'm just posing the question. Using Three, you're very close to the ten with all, not, not a lot of margin of error to put the county and the school board back through this again in 2030, through this whole map. Probably, you're not going to have a lot of time. Maybe that's insignificant, but I was just asking, Mr. Spitzer, if that was, if that is. Have to go through this all again. We haven't done it in thirty years, for however long, you know, so.
As, as, as Commissioner said earlier, at the beginning of the presentation, this is a numbers game.
That's right.
Going back to what Mr. Dixon says, the numbers are what they are. You didn't create them, nor did this room create them. It's the population. My concern is, and sooner or later, and, you know, this common sense tells me that once we, now we're having these discussions, someone's going to come away from this and they're not going to be happy. All it takes is that one someone to file a lawsuit. And when they file a lawsuit, that hundred thousand dollars is going to, now whether it be that you're for or against, it doesn't matter. Also, hundred thousand dollars to me is going to be.
Top of the bucket.
Bisquux, because it can drag on for years. And, and, and we're, we're asked, you're all asked, we're asked, we're trying to follow your lead, more follow your lead, kind of mission. We're asked to, to address this because it's something that's been told out to us that we are not in compliance. The numbers are what they are. And unless you're going to take this county, and you're going to drop a pin, I don't, out, or wherever, you're going to drop a pin at Port Union, and you're going to drop a pin wherever, you know, how are you going to, because we can't create people. I can't create people. Only one person can do that. And it's, that's what I have to apologize for saying. You know, and, 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 and I'm going to say this too, and, and I know I'm waiting out here, but I'm, I'm looking at this, looking at you here. I'm thinking about her dad. Nineteen eighty-eight, nineteen eighty-eight. Five years after the court order, that said we must do what we must do. An African American man was elected superintendent of schools in Swan County, and he ran countywide, right? I go back to, and, 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 yeah, let's look at people in this room. I have respect for everybody in here. We're all, we're all different, obviously. But to me, Paul Huth King said, I want, I want to age people on their character. Don't worry about telling this man their character. Man, I looked at Charles Blauch. I look at character, man. I still look at character. That's what, that's what I want to emphasize over and over. But again, to say, this is, these are numbers, and we're doing the best, I want to submit, if you have the time, let me have my. Okay, but we're looking at the numbers, and we're asked to do the best we can possibly do with these numbers. This man, as you said, Commissioner, which spent thirty, thirty-something thousand dollars with his study, which is an in-depth study. A lot of time on this. So we're, we're, to this point, so we're being asked, you're all being asked, to look at this and what's the best overall plan to try to meet the needs of everybody in the district, okay? So if you have a question, I will take a question.
My question, I'll, I'll skip the conversation with you, I just want to practice that tag about what you just forgot. My question is, when you add twenty-six hundred people to District Two, is District Two still going to be a minority-majority district?
No, but it's not now. It's not a minority, it's not a minority.
What is it now?
Thirty-six percent.
Of black, of black people?
Correct.
So how, if you want to add some more to it, black or white or Hispanic or what?
Both.
Huh? Both.
And, and, and the percentage of African Americans goes down from thirty-six to thirty-two, it's went free.
District Two is not going to, no longer be what the intention was for by going to District Two by the court order. It's going to change. Well, should we be shrinking its, its, if you would like it? If you intend to keep what the court order demanded, you'd be shrinking District Two.
They want to do a reminder.
I'm concerned about you, Mr. Johnson, I'm a Swan, I'm a Swan County resident.
But we got a blue people out of mine, so how do we do that if we shrink your district?
I'm concerned, there was a purpose why District Two was created.
I understand that, but it also says.
And it's nice being negated.
I, I don't think it's being negated. We're just trying to level, level up the district here. It's just numbers. It's not.
Well, why was, did you?
It's not black or white. To me, it's not.
Now, come on, man, that's, 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 that's realistic.
It is realistic.
That's realistic. We know, we know, we don't need to go there. We really don't.
Okay, so, you have no question?
We've got a question, the answer is, do you have any more somewhere that could help shed light or?
No, but, uh, what would be helpful is some direction as to where to go. I heard questions about accounting for future growth. I heard questions about trying to keep District Two as, as much of a minority influence district as possible.
Is there a way, because I know, um, one of our commissioners has asked me, where we can, or, where we need to do this privately, where we can show them the maps with road overlays, so that way they have a more thorough understanding as to, um, where you're.
Sure. It, it's hard to do on small maps, um, but if we can, straight up, I can show you road overlays here. So the problem is, even with this, is that to, to get the, the roads, um, you can zoom in quite far, so.
If I can maybe ask you a different way, is there any way that you could create, I know the file side, you can do this, but the map, if you have, if we can look at road overlays, that way I can show it to the center.
Individual districts?
What about, of the proposed districts, with the, with the road overlay, and then we can zoom in on that, is that possible?
It's, it's, it's possible, it's not going to be perfect. It, it'll be better. It'd be better. Yeah, we could do, especially if it's large format maps like that, uh, you could look at them on your computer screen and.
Yeah, and I can zoom in on that. And that would just help, because I know there's, without road overlay, sometimes it's hard to figure out where to.
Will that be an additional fee for that?
Well, it's, it's not in the scope, but, but, well, we'll, we'll try to work on that, um.
I, you know, I'm going to yield to the county commissioners, you know, a part of the question in my mind right now, you know, I hear what you're asking of Martin, is, is, uh, how this, these overlays of roads, we need additional workshops, workshop being where we have that information, school board, county commissioner, if you want, they could look at this. Where, where do we go from here? What is our, what's our next, our next step? Because, you know, I, I just, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to get, I'm going to get, uh, business taken care of. I want to have ample opportunities, people have input, but we don't need to just throw this out, like Mr. Fleming's coming earlier, and we'll need to drag it out and on and on.
If, if we've got the maps, we could take a nine-one-one map and do one per, for each of us for, draw, drawing the, the maps on nine-one-one map that's got the roads on there. So we can take what we have now, I think, and, and do that. So if we, if we tweak up what we have, maybe we could do that in-house to draw out. Would be color-coded, or it could be, I guess, but, um, so we wouldn't have additional cost of that.
Well, it's, it's, does anybody need to see that? I mean, I, I would ask, you know, I mean, I ask for it downstairs, I mean, I'm looking at this, it's just already figured out.
There's some of that main, main runway.
Is there a particular area, Don, that you're questioning?
You know, it's just hard, and you're, you're a survey, you know, like the back of your hand.
No, not, not on nine-one-one.
No, but I, you travel in, in all the districts, you know, I mean, I'd just like to see how it cuts into, I need landmarks, you know what I mean? I may not know the other districts as well as I know mine, but a landmark would definitely help.
Same, like, as consensus, I think, maybe, yes.
It's well driven, so I might do.
Mr. White, I'm dealing with you, Mr. White, you're all the lead, leading on this. Do you have that information, you have another workshop with that information in hand?
We're, we're happy to share all the electronic files. We, we now have shape files of these districts that we had to grade them, but we can, we can share, if you have a system that can read this stuff, we're happy to share.
Hey, Don?
Yes, sir.
I may have the solution.
Okay, sure.
ACLU has kind of, it's got a, overrated, I'll talk to Google that, so.
So is any other commissioner, do you need to say what, what are the numbers?
I would.
Can you tell me more? One question, Mr. Spitzer. You were saying, I think, you're trying to go up to shade out, uh, certain areas. Is there a possibility that that shade out some area that you can put in on that, with areas that more populated, uh, white populations? Or do you have, can you say that the, what area is the most heavily populated by?
I think I was thinking of, well, ways in which District Two could be, the African American population of District Two could be made a, a higher percentage. And, um, what I said was, you, this will, there we go, this, you either, this is District Two here, right, under, in Plan Three. And so you, you either look at adding, you know, one of these areas to it, or, and/or, what I said was, shed, remove, an area that has a, a relatively low population of African American folks out of District Two. So, so that the percentage perhaps remains the same or gets higher. But it's, it's, there, there's not a lot of options that we could look at that, and if, if that's what you all want me to do, we can, we can, you know, come up with Three A or something like that for the next time, and we can come up with one that, that underpopulates the higher growth area of the county.
Just following you, another question.
Yes, um, you mentioned, um, you mentioned an advisory board. You said Columbia County, correct? And what did, what was their capacity? I mean, were they, uh, I know that this is approved, but would the advisory board have some type of input? Say, with this, with this thing on, with that?
Yeah, it's kind of late for that here now, but, but, well, sorry, but I mean, Columbia County is a charter county. Uh, the, the, the citizens advisory group is a, is a creature, and they're a charter. There are three charter counties, there's twenty charter counties in Florida, three have these advisory things, and, and, um, they, they are charged with making recommendations to the county commissioner. But the law says that the, the final decision is always made by the county commissioner or the school district, and so, it's not really ever been tested as to whether the county wouldn't take a recommendation from the, from the advisory group. But the law says that the county commissioner or the school board, at the end of the day, is, is who makes the decision. But, but, you know, if there's a citizens group that works for two months on plans, they're, they'll, they'll, perhaps might be inclined to pay more attention to it.
I'll, I'll just add, on an average, great school board meeting, there's two or three citizens other than staff. So we decided to have a joint meeting to invite the public, and at a workshop, we normally do not have comment, we don't have citizen input. They just listen to directors give speeches. We wanted to hear, everyone here wanted to hear the concerns, and they're all out, and they all will be listening. That's the purpose of the open, open forum, which is unusual for the school, and, and we're glad to prepare into that. Is there any other correction from Mr. Spitzer in terms of changes you guys are on seeing in that?
Could we, if we had to manipulate the line a little bit where he could keep some of four, over to the left, there's, there's more minority in there in the blue, that where he lost it in District Four?
On Two A, I think you're talking about.
Or Three, yeah.
Or Three.
Or any of them where he's losing anything, we can manipulate it back the other way to, to help that situation would be, would be fine with me as well. If he's losing something there in town in that, that, that particular area.
So you're talking about.
Where he could have more.
Can I give the rest of what he had in District Two?
Or whatever might would help him, and even if he went over, it's fine, just as long as he's not under, right?
But your, but your percentages and your numbers are still.
Well, he said we could go over a little bit, right, just to help, if we had to.
And that goes to your commissioner, to your right, over ten years from now, we're already over.
Yeah.
And then, so then you create it, you already read it. I mean, it's, I can say, folks, it's, it's numbers. It's like you said a while ago, it's about my function of the board, you can punch in this.
And, and this, this is just an example of, this is District Two, and, you know, we've added these areas here, which, you know, have, it was a higher number of African American folks, so maybe there's other things that we could do to tweak, and we're happy to, to look at that.
So what is that color, is there color coded? So what does that, come back to that one, you just have, so what, what those colors are?
These are all census blocks, and where there, where there's no color, that means that there's zero African, okay? And as, as the, in this area here, I believe it's something like one to ten, and then, you know, eleven to twelve, or something like that.
Mr. Turner, just like you're adding more workshop on the line. Okay, that's, that's what I'm hearing, I'm hearing, with what specific information that we need that we don't have tonight, because, you know, obviously, we have. Because, you know, obviously, we have alternative plans here. So, what, what do we need so that, that workshop, we can address questions and concerns that can be presented here?
I have something I just thought of, and I guess that would be a lack of supervisory lesson, but obviously, that would probably change some polling rotations as well.
I've already spoken with her, and there's no version of this due to, again, the punching the balloon problem. No matter what, she's gonna have a significant amount of work. The one thing that she has that I communicate to the board is two things. Uh, number one, please follow roads, cause that makes her life easier. And two, when y'all are budgeting, remember how much work you're putting on.
So, we're, we're agreeing with them, we need one more workshop. Again, I asked the question, what specifically do we need from Spitzer? From who, from every inch that is in the room, what do we need? What are you all asking for, school board members, what are you asking? And sell that before we leave.
Well, I guess Mr. Hale wanted some map with the roads and, and Mr. Perkins.
And, and Mr. Scott.
If you did, if you did those shade areas, where those shade areas, you're talking about working.
I, I may be able to provide those without Mr. Spitzer. I'll know that tomorrow.
Say that again.
Uh, I may be able to provide those without having to, what, because Spitzer may be able to have the maps with Google, uh, Google Maps numberway, to have streets, to make some sense out of.
Okay, so that would be presented at the next workshop?
Well, I, I would probably do that privately with them, so that way they could know where it's at this point.
Okay.
Again, it's the boundary of roads on, or whatever, that boundary, whatever road that is on. I'm not asking, I know the roads in my district.
Okay, all right, so that. Scott, real quick.
Is, is there any maps that you don't like at all? So, we could limit Spitzer's work for Mr. Spitzer.
I don't, none, none that I do not like. I mean, I, I'm favoring the ones that gives the highest percentage white population, African-American population to District Two. And I think, I think that makes, and the one we have here is alternative three. I mean, that's, that's, that's what I'm looking at, that seems to be the primary concern.
Great question. You, you mentioned earlier that as far as distance, when I'm in this, I'm, I'm over it. But, um, an incumbent or any of the district, you can't, you can't pick a map that takes one out or puts one in, favors.
You, you can't adopt, you cannot intentionally adopt a plan that favors or disfavors an incumbent or a candidate.
And neither one of these alternatives does that. They all, they all maintain, with the, your person's due reelection.
It does. It does.
That's a, that's a result, that, that's, but it's not, that was not the country in, in creating.
Okay, so, I'm asking the question again. You say you're gonna create this, or you're gonna have this information that you're gonna share with us. So, if you're gonna do that, then we need another workshop.
I would suggest that one.
I just, I wanna be clear.
I mean, my thoughts are, is, and I guess, maybe we do, but initially, my thought was, I don't, I mean, if, if I'm gonna have to get with either Mr. Scott or Mr. Morrison to look at the map for the, for that outline, um, I mean, that needs to be done prior to another workshop. So, we're gonna address concerns in the workshop, cause I can't, I mean, obviously, can't meet with any of you guys privately. I mean, we need to, before we set another workshop, if that's what we're gonna do, then we need those, those road boundary maps pronto.
The thing to question another way is, is there any reason for Mr. Spitzer, if we do have another workshop, to create a document or create work for us?
Personally, I think, I mean, I'm just looking, I haven't said much about the cell blocks, but I'm looking, I think Mr. Spitzer's gonna be vital in being here, no matter what, because he has that software block, software right there. So, I'm looking at my District Three, and I see that he's taking in two, three, I see, I said, I don't know if they're blocks, but right there on the, on the northeast corner of District Three. I mean, if he, if he shed all of that out, he's losing blocks that do not have any minorities in it. Yes, that line. If he moves that line further north, but go back to that other map, I mean, those blocks are white and I think tan, which means lower volume, higher volume of non-minority, I guess is what I'm trying to say. So, if he, if he, yeah, so if he shed those, it would, it would decrease, what am I trying to say? Decrease the white vote, which would increase the percentage of the minority, I guess is what I'm trying to say. So, how do, how do we do that? How do I do that? How do I have that conversation without Mr. Spitzer present? I guess is what I'm saying.
So, I, I'm, I'm happy to, it's too late to say. It's drawn. What, what, what did I say?
But you're, but you're willing to come back?
He can come back with the software. I guess I was asking, do we want him to create something, i.e. spend time, um, on additional documents? He can come back and show how the software works with understanding where now we know where the boundaries are, what exact roads.
But.
And I think it's, it's, I'm sorry, let me cut you out here.
What I'm saying is, is, we're talking about map three. What I'm saying is, I'd like to change map three, so that District Two loses to that part that is mostly all majority folks. So, I mean, if he does that, then that, that benefits, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, no, my District Three, that right there. So, if District Two loses that, that's gonna help him go over to and pick up one of those darker shaded areas that has a higher percentage of, am I wrong?
So, the. It helps, it helps, it helps the District Two.
Right, and that's why I asked him about taking the shade out as well, for the, for the.
Losing the white.
These, these things are, are not.
Create another map.
We're happy to do this.
After we look up.
But I can't do it like on the fly. So, this takes a couple of days to, to look at it, personally, to look at it again. So, I'm happy to do, what I heard was, we, District Two and, and that, and all. And then I heard another idea about underpopulating a different part of the county. So, those are two different, is that correct?
But, there again, you hear now, when you punch that balloon, and when you punch it here, it creates a problem there. The numbers, keep pressing this, the numbers aren't working, something's off. We can create more basic problems.
We got to see what it does.
Well, that, well, Mr. Spitzer, that, where you're taking out from District Four, and here the other, other areas take, add some, uh, District Two from that area. That's all I ask you for. So, the numbers, the numbers get on balance, the numbers get on balance.
As you're saying, I'm thinking, cause I, yeah, but, but, we can do that, if, if.
So, is consensus take map number three, take out some of the.
Four.
District Four, that, that is not minority.
Create another map.
Is that what we're adding? Is that what we're adding?
Create another map.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at, map three.
Road is created map.
Nine, three. And tweak District Two.
Basically, recreate another map, but.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, use map three as a guideline, tweak District Two.
Sure.
And, and that's what we're doing here, just iterating. I can't tell if it's somewhere else.
Well, what we're doing, so and so, you're bringing the percentage up in thirty-two, and it's present at thirty-six. So, I moved it up, just to pick the percentage more by taking out of District Three, and then going to another district to take more out of that district, that would have, that have black population.
But here's what we don't know. Yeah, what we don't know is how much more population is gonna be attracted, and we've still got the remainders in our.
So, I'm just, I'm just asking to do that.
And we may be drawing in or in all of the maps, I guess.
Okay, so, so. So, I'm trying to be specific with him, to let him know what to bring back. Uh, which have map number three, tweak on District Two, to bring more minorities in, take white people out, and move it into other districts. Is that what I'm looking for?
Yes.
I, I, I hear that, I understand that. The, the other alternative about underpopulating a high growth area, is that, there's no interest in that?
No.
And if we, if we can get a map that does that, that you guys are happy with, we don't have to have another workshop. So, what I'm hearing, and you guys correct me if I'm wrong, that's the percentage, so if we make that change, and.
If, if, had a courtesy, yes, I would like, I would like for us, I think, we all take, we all take.
One, two, three, you get the map, whatever maps, one or two, three.
I don't want to hear your opinions.
So if, if, if there is another medical article, or if it's advertising, that looks like it may be.
Well, I, I don't know what your internal timeline is, but with the new law, you need to get done early next year, but there really no reason not to get it done this, this year.
Okay.
Supervisor will have more to do.
How much, how much time do we need to create maps?
To create them? Well.
You tweak it.
A week? But you want to get notice and stuff like that.
Sure. You got a budget workshop, I think.
I just want to be clear of what we're doing.
We all do it.
All these maps we've been looking at here. We can't have a map. So we got, we got all these maps here. To me, what, what I'd say, since we've all met up here tonight, we looked at these maps, we looked at all the numbers that's going on here. I think what would be best served for all the electives here that's in this district here is everybody should choose which map they think is what's best for the district. Like Mr. Land said, you know, he said, you know, like map three, you talking about, what's that, seven, seven percent? About where we at? So doing the history of what we got in the county, we're going to be right back to the same problem as what he just said. Nobody's paying attention to what he just said about financials on this. I don't want to get back in this in ten years. So therefore, we need to do something that's, that's financially responsible and do what's right for the, for the county, regardless of what these numbers are. Because we're, we're all Americans, we all voted. So why, why, why don't we argue over the points that we're doing here? I think everybody are picking map that they want and the map wins the game. That's my. Because this man done put all this together, brought it to us. We all come together on a special workshop, because we know we don't do it. And, and now we talking about redrawing another map, if I bring it back, no. We got this, let's go on. Pick a map, let's get on.
He basically taking the three and tweaking the three. We were talking about.
I understand what you're saying, but what's, what's with all these other maps?
Well, you'll be that same unit, you drew those maps up just for our, our observation. You have, have something to share with somebody.
That's where I'm at.
So now we got, we got three, so we're going to go with three then.
That, that's my.
Alright, so let's, let's do it this way. If Commissioners, if the majority, you, you folks want another workshop?
Yes.
I just think it's the right thing to do. This isn't a thing to take lightly, what we're trying to give a conference here. It affects everyone.
Alright, so I prefer the two, Chief Commissioner, I'm going to call it, I'm going to.
I'm okay, I'm okay tonight. That's just me.
Mar- Marley, you okay? Mr. Chris Marley, you okay tonight?
Yep.
I'm okay.
Any board members up here? Ron, I think I know you're okay. Still?
Either way, I don't need any weekend.
If we're going to go with it here and move on, whatever the next step is, I'm fine with that too. But I'm, I'm very happy to sit down and hash it out.
Another workshop, because I think it's going to be very, I don't even know the more it is, I know we're saying that. We all open all that, but there's some other issues driving this, so I think another workshop, so we need to get it as close to right as we can. So, because other people, we get calls, I get a lot of calls, and like, they ask me questions. So, I think another workshop, I mean, we definitely need everybody to understand this. My concern is about the right divide, and when we start moving everyone around, I, I think another workshop. I don't see, you know, what point in not doing a workshop. I think it'd be beneficial. It wouldn't be detrimental, but it'd be beneficial. So it'd give us more knowledge, give us more understanding. So what's the rush? Why, why we got to rush through it?
Well, I think she can ask that, what supervisor, for the elections here, as soon, soon as possible.
So what's she trying to do, meet the next election? Is that what she's trying to do?
No, I don't know. I can't, I can't read her mind.
As long as we get it done, we don't have to meet the next election, we can make sure of that. So, so, I mean, so what's the agenda?
I don't think it's been a hurry, we've been on this for a while.
But therefore, I can use my own idea, because we'll have a workshop time, we don't have time. And we got four maps here, we look at, and if we're wrong, we can pick one of them and deal with it.
I, I try to listen to and be respectful of everybody, what they shared, but, you know, to me, we're, we're getting to the point, we're going to tweak this, and we're going, we're going to gain fifty people, a hundred people, I don't know. It's just, you know, it's, it's, but if it's to appease, if it's to appease, you know, folks to say, you know, we, we've turned over every stone, trying to, to try to do this, and I, you know, and I, you know, I'm fearful that we'll come back with one more map, and that map's not going to be, not going to be satisfactory. We're going to want another map, and another map, and another map. I can tell you, I'm, I'm willing, I'm willing to back to go with one more workshop, but folks, we need, we need to go ahead and set this thing up. And which White, Commissioner White said, it's not something that's, that's been hastily drawn together. This man has spent countless hours putting these maps together. And to me, and I'm standing over there tonight in his shoes, I'm thinking, what do they think about me and my expertise? That we paid thirty something thousand dollars for. So, what I'm willing to say is if one more, one more workshop's going to tweak, folks, I don't think it will. And I'm willing to go down that road, and I, I take your point, very, very well stated, the fact that, you know, we paid for this, as many broad as his expert opinion, and folks, go again to the fact, we can't create people. The numbers aren't what they are. The population of this county is what it is. And the law says, the constitution says, legislature says, you must, you must address these things. Those are out of culture, and they need to be, they need to be fixed. And that's, you know, and I, and one of my friends said to me today, you know, several years ago, I put my hand on my, I raised my right hand, and I swore to uphold the laws, the constitution, the state law, and that would go. And that's, that's to me, that's my obligation, that's the main one thing that I need to look at. And if someone thinks I'm being prejudiced for whatever, then shame on you, but no. I'm just looking at the numbers. I look at people, I look at people, period. So, so I, I think we're going three weeks from today, we're going to have one more workshop.
What, what day?
Yeah, I was wondering.
Oh, five, four.
We got three Commissioners over here, ready to vote tonight.
Well, we can't vote tonight.
I mean, if ready to move forward with a map.
Okay, well, I had, I had, at least myself included in that, that's, we're willing to, 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 uh, the way I'm here, I'm willing to, to do one more, one more meeting, so. It's almost up.
There is, the only other possibility is, Board can have a workshop.
Yeah, that'd be.
You can have a workshop, can not have a workshop. And we'll probably both have the same map. How, how you communicate that map is up to you all. I think Mr. Taylor's saying it'd be better to publicly air that map.
And that was my question, Commissioner, as Mr. White says, and I don't want to go around the room just for general knowledge, who favoring what, which map? I mean, at least that gives us an idea, are we, are we all agreeing to this thing, or are we all thinking alike?
I made my, hold on, I mean, when you look at alternative three, numbers, that's the percentage, that gives the highest percentage of, of African-Americans to District Two.
Well, I was, I was elected to represent the town of Lamont District, and that's what I'm trying to do, so I love the people in this county. It's a numbers game, and I'm not, Lord River White, he's brought the maps. All you're accomplishing by changing that map is moving a few people around, it's not going to change the outcome very little, if it changes it at all. It's going to change very little. So I don't understand why we want to keep on and on with this, when we've got it right here in front of us.
Wherefore, to me, no matter what's, what's decided, it's going to be controversial on the issue. Common sense is going to be, there's going to be controversy, so if we can eliminate some of that by having another workshop, I think it would be, it would be prudent to consider that.
Mr. Taylor, I just, I did some quick simple math, and, and my numbers, the highest percentage of blacks is on map three, and that's thirty-two percent. The lowest is in map one, and that is twenty-nine point one percent. We're talking about a hundred and ten people. And there, we got a, it's a hundred and ten people. I mean, we're, we're, we're going to, we're going to, I guess I'll sit down maybe privately and address our concerns with all of these maps to, to try to come up with another map, like, it's what everybody says, the numbers are the numbers, and we're talking about a hundred and ten people, because if we, and I'll just use my example, if we take away those blocks with no minorities in it in District Three, well, got to move the line somewhere else to, to, to make it, to affect overall, so then, the, that's going to skew whatever you, you take from another district, and, I mean, then you're back to the drawing board, all the numbers are wrong now, so you're back at square one. I mean, he spent, I don't know, thirty-five thousand dollars worth of time to give us four, and I mean, we, we, we can keep playing with it, but I guarantee you that if the five of us meet with either his attorney or Mr. Scott, there's going to be five different maps that, that, that we're going to produce. And then, we're going to give, I mean, we're going to sit here, we're going to go back and forth meeting with Mr. Scott for three weeks. Something different, I'm going to come up with something, I mean, this is like.
I think that's dumb.
We're just going to go around and around.
I think, I think you don't go, you'll be elected.
At, at any rate, um.
I just don't want to get into the scenario where we down by, it's another map.
I didn't.
I said, you got it, the numbers are not going to change. That, that should just not. You can't change, there's only so many people here. Looking this around is not going to vary very little, so why are we going to keep doing it?
I'll say it, I'll say it.
Do you feel that way? The numbers are going to change, like, if you tweak, if you tweak map three, that's what we're talking about, so you can get rid of one, one, two, and two A, so looking at, at three, if you tweak the life we, we're talking about, do you feel, I mean, you're the one that looked, you've looked at this, and now, so. I don't, well, you know, it's. You think it's due track of one, you add to another, and it's more complicated, but it, it's not going to be thirty-six percent, which is what it is now, and I don't think it'll be thirty-five, but it'll be, you can maybe get it up a, a point or two to make. No.
You only go maybe about thirty-three, maybe thirty-three point three, something like that, without all, you don't get.
It's, it's, no, I'm not going to, I'm not going to like it, just to be.
But my question is, why, why do you want to spend all this extra time doing all that for?
That's why I wanted to ask that question. And that's why I wanted to ask that question, is it, is it worth the rub?
Well, I asked Mr. Spitzer, by the way, that does not add up, it's hard to do, what he's saying does not add up to do. When you're going out there, you all know that every election won off of one or two votes. If you had here this county, you won off of three votes. The person that ran, and two other people voted for me, won the election. So if they ever vote to count, so if, if there is a little texture in there, something down there on the table. So that's why I wanted to ask the question, I'm going to close him and do so, or something, he's going to probably all up, or, or, this is going to shake on it.
I'm going to bend out of the shape, I mean, I just, you start changing what we've already got here, it's like. You're just going to create more and more maps, because just like Mr. Land said, there, when you go back to redraw this, every one of us is going to have a different take on it. It's not like, and we can't sit down and have a meeting, because we'd be violating sunshine law. So each one of us has got to meet separately and look at that and put our opinion into it. How many maps do you think is going to come out of that?
Well, I think if he was, if he was doing what I, what I was asking about, and also Commissioner Land, Commissioner Marley had said that, they spoke on the same thing, and I would say that if we do that, and I said, map three, and we did that, so people on map three, I don't see a reason for going to draw another map, if we did nothing, doesn't raise the numbers up. If that, that would be done. In my, my opinion, would be done.
If you, if you don't have numbers to freeze, you got to tweak the map. I mean, that's, there's not a good way to do it. You got to tweak, you got to tweak the box. You all have a statement about classes of board, how we, how we proceed, the school board, how we proceed.
Yeah, the county would adopt the map first. The question, the question is, I thought originally that the county was asking the expert for a different map. Therefore, we needed another meeting. The way this has evolved, is we're kind of good with the maps we have, and we may not need another meeting. So, I think that's, that's where we're at now. First, we answer the question, if we don't need another map, the workshop wouldn't be that meaningful. We, we already have some answers in front of us, in, in form of all these numbers. Like, remember the other numbers? If we don't need another map, if we need another map, we need the map expert to come talk about where the numbers changed, why they changed, and probably the deviation went up, we fix it. So it would be seven, eight, nine, sorry, it's at seven, so it'd be, it obviously is going to be higher, so there's that color, so.
The percentage.
The percentage.
If you keep raising that percentage disparity in the districts, back closer to that ten percent, then you're going to be right back to this again. And if you don't equal them out to a closer number, which gives you more time.
I can tell you're at a workshop, so these are things we can discuss. You got three Commissioners sitting here, looking at three different maps, I think, I can tell you. So unless we sit here and hash this out for the next couple of hours, I don't know how we're going to come to.
Yeah, I mean, that, 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 that was my point, is like, if we, if we postpone this and go do it again, I want to sit down with somebody and say, hey, this, these, what about this? I like this. Or, how does this help two, or how does this help one, how does this affect three? Here, here, go with this one, then he's going to go meet with you hypothetically. No, no, scratch that, so then he's going to call me, hey.
Just an observation. So what we've been talking about over here is, my understanding is the school board is going to adopt whatever the county adopts.
We don't want two maps.
We want. And the school board is deferring to us to go.
Yeah, we're not going to have two separate voting maps.
And so, what are, I think, there's no action today. So, if y'all are seeing what I'm saying here, it's up to, it's up to a, a decision of the board. Uh, if the board is happy with the maps as they stand today, and is ready to take action on the maps as they stand today, there's no reason for a workshop. If the board wants more information and wants another map, then there is another reason for a workshop. I guess that's the, that's where we're at.
Could, could we tweak them before the, before we vote?
If we tweak them, if we tweak them, we're coming back for another workshop.
It's watching in front of you, or come back?
So what do you need to know?
I think consensus from the board.
Well, well, no action today, but, yeah, but if you all want to come back for another workshop, I guess is the question.
I'm talking about if we did tweak them, we'd only tweak them to help Mr. Perkins.
Yeah, but you, you have to advertise that, I think, like you said, that, that, any other map needs to be, additional information would have to be advertised. When I'm here tweaking, we're going to talk.
Mr. Marley, tweaking.
He's got an idea of tweaking himself.
It's not going to change anything.
Perkins is, I want to see whatever those shaded areas look like. I don't, I, I mean, I look, I, I'll just tell you, I was looking at two and three.
But if we're going to come back, I'm going to say this, we need to have very specific direction to Mr. Spitzer, do this. And if we don't have direction to Mr. Spitzer, do this, then there's no point in coming back.
Look, May, I, I thought you did give direction a little while ago. You told him move this, move that.
I didn't tell him, I asked him, but.
Okay, ask him. To help District Two, and that's really what the discussion is about here, so let's be real. Now that Mr. Udell's left, I think I'm, somebody's got to say something, that I don't see the issue with tweaking any map to make District Two a little bit heavier with the black vote. And Mr. Perkins is correct, the last city council was won by two votes. So it is important, it's really important into that district. So I think if you don't at least try to do that, I don't care what map, pick one through, whatever. But pick one, and give him the direction of how you want to treat District Two, because that's all you're talking about. The rest will go with it, because they'll have to.
No, I don't.
If that's what I heard you say before, and now you're all.
Mr. Annika, I don't disagree with you.
Back in circles.
That's what we did three months ago, when we asked him to bring us these maps. And, and, and we've looked at them now, I don't know, we've probably, I don't know how long the school board's had them, we've had them at least five or six days. We've looked at them, and here they are. If we ask them to, if I, if I say, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Spitzer, if I say, hey, let's tweak this right here, then everybody else has to tweak, because all the numbers just got moved by what my tweak did.
Absolutely.
So then.
But it's not.
So then we're all back to the.
Correct me if I'm wrong, it's not going to be that great on the rest of the districts. You're going to pull a few here and a few there, it's not going to change that.
But it's based on census block, so he can't just go and cut, he can't, I can't, it's based on the block, so he has to take the whole block. We can't just carve out their neighborhoods.
Kind of watch them do that before, it seemed like it worked, but.
I think what I'm hearing is.
I don't understand why you don't want to do.
It would be with this caveat, that, that there would not be wholesale changes to the rest of the, of the, of the plan, of the map, right? We would tweak it, we would try to get the African-American population a little higher in District Two, but we not do it in a way that would cause, you know, major changes to any of the other lines in an alternative.
What about the population? Is there a way to do it to help him and his district without changing, running the percentage up closer to ten percent in one of the other districts, or his district, or?
Yeah, I was looking at that. If, if we, if there, we would try to do that, is, is the short answer. There probably is a way to do it, but I, I can't, I don't, I'm not being invasive here, but to, to say yes.
It's not a drive-through process.
Mr. Spitzer, can you look at that and just get that, you know, something, and just say, well, I can or cannot do it?
The answer may be no, I mean, is it maybe?
It may be no, I mean, so if it's not doable, then you get that, you know?
If, if it is doable, then you have a workshop, is that correct, or?
Yes, it could be based off your, or you call this back. My mistake.
Well, I, I'm just going to ask the question here, I missed, somebody, I don't know who said it earlier. I'm looking at four maps here, and we want to use the word tweak, we've got four maps that's been tweaked. Okay? Now, you know, I, I'm not the brightest, brightest boy on the tree, I don't understand that, but I can look at numbers. And I look at numbers, and I don't care, I can tweak it. Map three gives the highest percentage of black folks in that, in that community, and that, and that difference. And another thing I want to say, and this, I'm getting tired, so I'm going to go. I'm just sitting here thinking, thirty-five years ago, we had this quarter, Mr. Perkins, you've been Commissioner that district how many years?
One more, first year.
First year. Udell said he'd sort of sixteen years.
Twelve years.
Twelve, that's twenty-eight years plus, plus if, obviously you're going to finish your term. That's thirty-two years. Thirty-two years in a district that has never recorded these numbers for many, many years, has not been heavily populated African-American. And you've not failed to have African-American sitting on that county commission seat, and that's reality. I can say the same thing about school board. I can go back to Mr. Crawford, I can go back to Mr. Owens, I can go back to Mr. Cooper, I can go back to Mr.
Captain Dixon.
Captain, I can go, I mean, just, every, I mean, folks, where are we losing character quality? I mean, you know, it's just, and, and we're doing everything possible to give those numbers the highest numbers possible on those maps. I mean, I just think, you know, it's like, we keep framing maps, what we're doing, we're framing maps. And I, I just don't want to turn the wire, Marley, but I, I just came to be, as somebody mentioned earlier, we've got four maps that's been tweaked up here. We can tweak from now till the front side. I don't think, because you can't change numbers. So, you know, my, my part of it, I'm willing to say, you know, let's, let's, uh, but y'all, y'all, y'all believed all of this, so I'd have to be with you all the time, I guess.
But if you look at all the other districts, you never had a black property in one of the districts, you never had.
Yeah, there's four, yeah, there's three. Oh, work for me.
There's one black, and all the, all the districts, the rest of the district, you have white, black, and angry, all those districts are together. White, black.
But how many are in it? How many are in it?
Because they know it was a different big.
Well, I mean, you got to put your name out there to run.
But I'm just saying.
I'm just saying.
Then you're not going to get the votes. You're not going to get.
Doesn't stop you from running.
Right, but that's not the point.
Look, I, I'll say we settled tonight, we got the maps.
That's, that's. I won't be, um.
Alright, to your point, Mr. White, as I, I've sat and listened the entire time, I don't have the voting role in this, obviously. My role is going to be to make a recommendation to my board to adopt a certain map. As I sat here tonight and listened to all of the input, to your point about putting the issue to bed, as we sit here tonight, my recommendation would be to our board to adopt alternative map number three, and to be done. But obviously, we're going to, my recommendation to this board, that aside, is going to be to adopt whatever map you all eventually adopt, whether it's option number three or not, because we strongly, I'm, I strongly believe in the recommendation I bring to this board, that we don't need to have two separate district maps. I think we have a consensus here, we don't need a separate map. So, to that point, as I say here tonight, my recommendation would be to adopt number three. And so, that, that's where I am.
Mr. Taylor, may I say one thing? I can't imagine, I listen to this man, he's very knowledgeable about his material, and y'all paid him thirty-five grand, it sounded like. Sounded like it took a lot of time doing it. I can't imagine with the experience he had, the objective y'all found to do with this fifth map, he had already exercised everything he had to exercise. I, I, I mean, we've talked about the language and, and the hundreds of votes, and I, I think the man's already done his due diligence and, and, and produced, and the map you are talking about now ain't the one I chose. I did all my homework before I got here, and I ain't even saying it's the one I chose, but still, I, I'm agreeing with the majority. Y'all took, y'all took a consensus, and the consensus, I did the head count, it was five to four, alright? To, to go with one of the former maps, uh, that are present, so I think that would be why we ought to do it, back where you're pointing.
We need to bring this thing, thing to a close to tell.
So I think, here's my question for the board, for my board, do we need to have another workshop, or are we satisfied with the maps that we have? And if we have these three votes that are satisfied, three people that say that they're satisfied with the current maps, we won't have another workshop.
Are you sure that you are the one who would do?
I don't, I was just trying to do it to the, if you say the numbers don't matter, I'm good.
They do matter, it's just numbers all the way.
I'm good. Maybe y'all could vote on what map y'all.
He's already.
Y'all like map three?
I already said what I'm going to recommend.
Okay, I'm good.
So what I'm hearing, without actually.
Land? I don't like three, I want to tweak three. I'm just telling you.
I'd rather tweak one. If I had to tweak one, I'd like to tweak one.
Let me rephrase with Mr. Ralph, I believe in that. Three is good for tonight. You tweak three, make it better, you're on there, we're, we're on the board.
Alright, let's do that.
If you reverse backwards, and you'll, you'll have an issue. We know you're not, we know we're all, we all have the same goal. But we're. But we're, we're already there. You wanna make it a little bit better, uh, we're good with that. Um, and, and we don't really need a point workshop for you to fix it, if there is fixing to do.
If you can.
Tweak three.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, we just.
Tweak three.
When you get. Tweak three, we can tweak three.
We'll tweak three.
Spencer, do you have enough direction to tweak three in accordance with what you heard here?
Yes.
Okay. So we're okay to recommend, Mr. Spencer, do that?
Right, I'm fine.
So we, we, we.
Not if, unless we, we, so right now we got direction, Mr. Spencer, we'll take the recommendation, and we, we may not.
We'll talk to this.